Boy with his toys, of course.
Yep, yep. I know you're one ahead of me.
I am?
Yeah, I'm last.
You know me, I'm quick.
Good. Tom Scott, I hope he's listening.
Just to let everyone, just to let everyone know, we're now streaming live on YouTube.
Okay. So behave, Ed.
You know how to unmute.
He's listening.
Hi Bruce.
For me?
Yep.
Good.
So it says Judy Goodman, Bruce, just letting you know.
Yeah, she let me use it.
Does everyone have PowerPoints for this evening? Could you email them to? Everyone got a pen? It's R as in Robert. M as in Mary. C T. A G U E. At Bristol Township.org. Thank you.
DJ, you doing that, or do you want me to? You got it, okay.
I have the PowerPoint for Bristol Pike.
Okay, great, thanks.
And I'll be sending you. Mine here for 390 in a second.
Looks like the planning commission's coming in now.
So Kurt, who's the lead on this? Who is in charge of the? The Zoom, if you will. I see it says Randy up there. Is that Randy, or who is that?
That's me, Cindy.
Hey Bobby.
Oh Bobby, alright, can you enable your video, or?
No, it won't work, I've been trying to get it to work. We got these new.
Cindy, we had some trouble with getting John Greer on. So I guess Kathy, are you gonna?
Well, there's a John on here, but, I mean, I don't know if it's John Greer.
So, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Kathy, can you see me?
Yes.
Oh, you can, alright, got it. Alright, so then I. I'm gonna get started, if it's okay then?
Okay.
Alright, before we get started, I just want to apologize first to anybody who is watching this, and please ask you to bear with us, because it's our first time utilizing this. But in this day and age with COVID and the snow, it's a convenience, and it's the way we're trying to do business tonight, to make sure that we hear everything. So with that being said, it's. 7:09 PM, and I'm going to open this meeting of the Bristol Township Planning Commission. We're gonna follow our usual standards. So with that being said, I'm going to ask everybody if they could do the Pledge of Allegiance to open the meeting. I pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're also going to do one minute of silence for any intentions that you have for any of our prisoners, anyone in harm's way. Thank you. So. With our meeting tonight, I would like to say first that John Greer is excused. There was a little bit of technical difficulty, so he will be unable to get on to the Zoom meeting that we're having. But we do have our other members here tonight. And we're gonna proceed. So members, you should have the minutes from our last meeting. And I'd like to get a motion to accept those minutes in, if I may?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and second, all. In saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, so those meeting minutes from our last meeting have been accepted. So on tonight's agenda, we do have. One, two, we have three items. And if I could take some leeway here and go a little out of order. Last on our agenda was to hear from Pine View Estates LLC, 400 Crossings Drive, Bristol, PA, requesting a zoning change from R1 Residential to P1 Planned Industrial for the property located at 2800 Newportville Road, Bristol, tax parcels number 5-18-66 and 5-18-66-001. Subsequent to that then was land development for the same Pine View Estates. So do we have anybody on the meeting that is representing this?
Yes, I'm here, Ed Murphy.
Hi Ed, how are you?
Good evening, good.
So Ed, we in our pre-get-together, when we go over the different things that are in front of us.
Right.
The zoning change and with the land development. We're asking that that be tabled from us and Planning Commission, because it needs to follow a certain order, and to come in front of Planning Commission isn't necessarily the order in which we place it. So, I believe that you have received a letter from Gilmore and Associates dated November 11th.
Correct.
And in there, it talks about. Council, a public hearing, having to go in front of the zoning board, so we discussed that. And really, the proper steps here are. Council is the one that would do the map amendment to change for the map and use. Then the variances would have to go in front of zoning. So I can turn this over to Kurt a little bit, to give you a little bit of elaboration on that, but for our, for Planning Commission tonight, this is something that we feel that it's at a stage that we're not quite at yet. So Kurt, can I turn over to you to ask you to maybe go into a little bit more depth on that?
Sure, I think the. Concern that I'm hearing from some Planning Commission members is the sequence, and, you know, it's a little, a little bit of a chicken and the egg scenario here. You know, there's a lot of moving parts to this project. It's seeking a map amendment for zoning. And even if the zoning map gets amended and the use gets permitted in this, on this property, there's still a need to go to the zoning hearing board to get variances. But those variances aren't really applicable if you go to the zoning hearing board first, because without the use change, it would be a moot point, so.
And we understand all of that, and we understood all of that when we submitted the applications. My presumption, and I think at least some members of the administration, was that we could file them all, but then do them in the appropriate sequence. And we thought that at least with regard to the the map amendment, that before it went to council, that it should come to you guys. But if you're telling us that that is something that's exclusively the province of council, then we don't have to talk about that, and we'll go to council in January. And we've already made a presentation to council informally back earlier in the fall, and we've got, and I'm sure you guys think so too, it's a worthwhile project that everybody wants to see move ahead. Because Okna is a real presence in the township and wants to grow its presence there. So if you don't want to hear it, because you think that belongs just to council, then that's what we'll do. And then we'll come back to you guys on the land development end after we go to the zoning hearing board. But we just thought we could try to get the stuff done, line it up, but not get, ask for approvals all the way through until we follow the right sequence. But if you would prefer us not to do that, then we won't. That's all. So if that's your preference, that's what we'll do. I thought you wanted to weigh in on the merits of the text or the map amendment, but if you don't, that's okay too. It's up to you guys, we'll follow your lead.
Yeah, I mean, exactly what you said, it's worthwhile project and definitely wanted in the township. I just think some members of the Commission, Planning Commission are really, it should really follow a certain chain, because they didn't want to set a precedent out of that chain. So if we could, then, I don't know if we would table it then until you go in front of council on zoning, or?
I would think so, because we've already submitted our plans. You're right, we have Kurt's review. And Anand, who's on the screen under Arn Engineering, is our engineer. He's already responded to Kurt's demand, I think we're in good shape. We've submitted our waiver letter, so we're ready to go. Once, you know, if you want to get back in the more traditional sequence, fine. We can table that and then bring it back early next year once we go to the zoning hearing board and get the map amendment done by council in January.
So I had John on the phone, and I know John is in agreement with that.
Okay.
If I could just, Ed and Chris from the Planning Commission, are you in agreement with that also?
Yes.
I am.
Okay, so then I believe that we need to make a motion to table that, am I correct on that?
And that's fine, I just want to make sure that you don't feel the need to weigh in on the text amendment, right? I don't want to go to council and then say, well, did the Planning Commission look at the text amendment? And then you bounce us back again. As long as that's okay, I'm good, you tell me.
No, that's okay, that's exactly how it should work, Ed, that's.
Okay.
You got it, yep.
Good.
And if you want, I'll make the motion to table it, till they come before us for land development.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so move second, and everyone's in agreement. So we'll table this, and then again, we're sorry for the inconvenience. We just felt that it would be best to follow what our normal. You know, plans are.
Okay.
Alright, thank.
We'll look forward to coming back soon, very good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Stay safe. Okay, with that, what we're gonna do then is move on to our land development. 390 George Patterson Boulevard Associates LLC, One Tower Bridge, 100 Front Street, Suite 560. West Kasha Hocken, PA, requesting final land development approval in order to construct an industrial warehouse building on the property located at 390 George Patterson Boulevard, Bristol, tax parcel number 5-62-001-C11 in an M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone District of Bristol Township. So do we have anyone here tonight representing that on the video?
Yes, Andy Miller is here with Rituis Associates.
And Aaron Rapucci with, yeah, with the developer.
Okay. And we're gonna just ask you to go ahead, and was there any type of presentation that you had submitted, or?
Yes, I just emailed my presentation.
Okay.
Can you guys see that shared screen of the presentation?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, is it okay if I proceed?
Yes, it is, go right ahead.
Okay, good evening.
Corey, can I interrupt for a second, Kathy, this is Tom Scott.
Sure, hi Tom.
I'm sorry, I was having trouble getting in and out of the meeting, and I may have missed something, but. With regards to the map amendment for Pine View Estates.
Yes.
The ordinance requires that council get an opinion, an advisory opinion from the Planning Commission on the, on the map amendment, before they're gonna be able to vote on it. So if they're gonna vote on it in January, that issue has to have a a recommendation for or against from the Planning Commission. It's a requirement of the ordinance, you can defer the land development, of course, with the applicant's consent. But the, the map amendment requires the Planning Commission input.
Okay.
Will that be submitted in writing?
Well, you have to vote.
Okay, so I believe that they've already left the.
I'm gonna call Ed Murphy and get him back. I'm just gonna duck out, you guys proceed with Patterson, George Patterson, that's fine. But I'm gonna see if I can get Ed Murphy back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So you, what you mean is a recommendation for the Planning Commission to allow council to make that decision, correct?
No, 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 no. The ordinance says council cannot take action on a map amendment to the zoning ordinance, to the zoning map, until the Planning Commission renders an opinion, either for or against. It doesn't matter whether you say for or against, but there has to be, it has to be. It has to go through the Planning Commission.
Formality, right?
I guess, yeah, I mean, you could, you could certainly say you're in favor of it, you're opposed to it, or you're in favor of it with certain conditions, but it, they cannot pass a map amendment, or even, I think, have a hearing on it, unless the Planning Commission has rendered an opinion.
Even if we defer to the council?
You can vote to defer to the council. But you have to do it at the meeting, this meeting.
Okay.
In order for it to happen in January.
Well, can we just, since it was a separate item agenda, we tabled the land development.
Sure.
Just continue on, do the zoning change as the third item?
Absolutely.
Without them being present?
I'm back. Now what?
I was gonna say, without them being present, do they need to be at the meeting for, for us to?
First I'm back.
Ed's back.
Ed, back.
No question.
Okay.
Yeah, what'd you say?
Ed, what I've, this is Tom Scott, what I've been advising the Planning Commission is that before the hearing can be held by council for the zoning map amendment, they need to render you know, their, their advice, their opinion. And certainly in the form of it being, you know, something that says you defer to their judgment, that's fine. But you do have to, it does have to be, I think, voted on.
Okay, well, I'm happy to wait my turn if you want to do that, or however you want to do it.
Well, I mean, we could, is it wrong if I make the motion now? Since it's, we're all talking about it?
Sure.
I mean, if I make a motion to defer to council for the
I think.
zoning requests change?
Aren't we?
Text them or map them in.
We're technically in the middle of a presentation, or the beginning of one?
Oh.
I don't know if we have to make.
This is, this is, hey, this is Aaron Rapucci with, with the developer, you know, 390 George Patterson, we're fine if you guys take a vote, no problem.
So, so thank you so much, 390 George Patterson. So for right now, we're gonna put a small pause on you.
Yep.
And then we'll get back to the meeting. So as far as Pine View Estates, John just called me on the phone, and he said that he would like to say that the Planning Commission was not aware that we had to make that, to make a vote, or some type of recommendation first. He was under the impression that had to go to council. So with that being said, Ed, if you would like to make a, a motion?
Yeah, like I said, I'll make a motion to defer this to the council for the zoning change from residential to P1 Planning Industrial.
And do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion has been carried, and with that, we would like to just say to Pine View, we're sorry, but please bear with us again.
We're good, thank you for taking the time to explain it, we're good.
Thank you, Tom, for jumping in and letting us know. So, all good there.
Yeah, thanks, Tom, thanks Ed.
Good.
Thank you very much, Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back. Presentation for 390 George Patterson, and again, thank all of you for being so patient with us.
No problem.
No problem. So just take a step back, so on the line is, is Gabe Clark, but not Gabe Clark, it's actually Aaron Rapucci, way to, way to mess me up, Aaron. And he is a partner and director of development with 390 George Patterson Boulevard Associates. My name's Andrew Miller, I'm the project manager with Rituis Associates, preparing a plan. So this will be brief, and we'll move through this in the interest of everyone's time. I know everyone is itching to go out and build a snowman. So the, the purpose of our presentation this evening is, is three items. Sorry, if you could go back. Who has control of the slides? Oh, there we go, okay. So present basically the final land development plan that we have for condo unit 11 on the Dow property, and then seeking a recommendation of approval of the final plan to council, and then also seeking recommendations of approval for the requested modifications. So that's really what we would like to go through this evening. Next slide, please. So just by way of context, if you're not aware with the, of the location of the project, this is on the large Dow industrial manufacturing site along Route 4, or along George Patterson Boulevard, which is a private road. Our condo unit boundary is this area highlighted right here. That is the, the subject of the development. As you can see, when we go through the plans, there's some development outside of that, that this applicant is working with the landowner on, outside of that unit boundary, but that's, just by way of background, that's the site location. Next, please. And then just the zoomed-in view, apparently at one time back in history. And then just the zoomed in view, apparently at one time back in history, this triangular piece was parking. Was impervious. I believe it's been some time now that it's been restored back to grass. So we are calculating it as grass from a stormwater perspective. And but this is just kind of an enlargement of where we sit right along four thirteen. And and how we'll be tying in. Next, please. Uh, one more. There we go. So just a little bit of background, the overall Dow project is twenty eight point eight five acres in size, the entire. Campus, for lack of a better word. Our condo unit eleven is in that northwest corner, two point seven eight acres. To the north is George Patterson Boulevard and Veteran Highway. To the east is an existing asphalt area and building for Dow. To the south is more existing parking area and industrial buildings. And then immediately west of our site, again, George Patterson Boulevard and and Veteran Highway. It's in the M two heavy manufacturing. District in the zoning ordinance. And because this is a speculative development at this point and a user has not been identified. We feel that from a marketing standpoint, when they're going out to market the property, we would fit into to. One of the categories, either the F one manufacturing, F two research and development, or F three wholesale business. Wholesale storage and warehousing. So that's the intent of how we we anticipate fitting as a permitted use. They are proposing to do one industrial building, approximately sixty thousand square feet. On the plan, which we'll flip to in a minute, we have six dock spaces on the east side. And then we have sixty five passenger cars on the north and the west side of the property. Next slide, please. So access wise, we have three access points into this site. All off of George Patterson Boulevard, which is a private road. And then to the south of the site, we have access points through the existing Dow property. Internal access lanes, kind of thoroughfares, so to speak, throughout the industrial development. So there's plenty of access, truck access points, et cetera, within the development. One thing I just wanted to note by way of outside agency approval. We did receive planning commission, the county planning commission approval. We have received our NPDS permit. So from both Bucks County Conservation and Pendot, or I'm sorry, DEP. We are, we actually submitted today our sewage planning module to DEP, so that's in for review. And then we did receive capacity letters on sanitary and water. We also have received approval from the fire marshal. And today we resubmitted, or yesterday, I'm sorry, we resubmitted to the traffic engineer. And the latest township engineer comment from Kurt. And and his gang at Gilmore dated December ninth. And we've reviewed through that letter. We actually went through it with his team Monday morning. And talked about a lot of the comments, you know, to get some clarification and the site is unique. So as you'll see, when we go through the waivers and modifications, it's not a straight undeveloped area. It's got some uniqueness to it. So in the comment response letter that we sent back to the township yesterday, we did state. That we can comply with all of those outstanding comments. We don't. We don't have any fear addressing this. Previously on the project way back when in two thousand and four, there was a list of variances that were granted. There's also waivers that were granted for different work on the site as well back in two thousand and seven. And we feel that our development now fits in to the approval that those variances set up at the time in the waivers. So at this point, we don't need any additional variances, but we do need some site specific waivers. Next slide. Uh, next slide. So if I. If you could advance, please to slide eight. And then we'll go, actually, that works. That works perfect right there. So just a high level view of the site and what the development area looks like. We have a sixty thousand square foot building. We have dock, car spaces, access. Our stormwater is being handled on site by a rain garden. By to the northeast corner of the building, northwest corner of the building. We have an underground infiltration bed in the northern car parking area. And then we have a small stormwater BMP on the north side of of the parking, which is on the north side of the building. So previously, there was discussion about if the entire site could drain and get. Access down to the lagoon that is on the southern portion of the property. And we'll touch on that on a waiver here coming up, but just by way of the engineering to get it there. And calculations and the permitting nightmare that it could be of actually getting a new permit. To send stormwater to that basin with the current regulations, we decided it was best to contain it here on on the site. If you could advance, if you could go back one slide, please. Before I jump into the waivers, since I've been doing all the talking, is there any questions, comments? Anything that that the commission would like to discuss at this time? I love silence when I ask that question.
Yeah, so I don't have any. I don't know if the other members do, but.
I don't have the waivers.
Yeah, the waivers are usually, if you could just go into the waivers.
Absolutely.
Good.
Absolutely. If you could go back one slide, please. And I have a separate slide for each waiver, some of them with little screen snips to help explain the justification. First waiver is waiver of preliminary plan. We feel that given the simple nature of the development, there's no park area being dedicated, there's no subdivision of land. You know, there, there's not a bunch of public improvements. We feel that it can be processed as a preliminary plan. Or I'm sorry, a final plan and to go through the the dual step would not be. Would not really be necessary.
So at this point, we would ask if you could just go through the waiver letter, but. We would ask if you could read off, for instance, in section one seventy seven dash.
Sure.
Yeah, oh, perfect.
Absolutely.
The waiver, the number.
Sure, no problem. I I didn't know how formal you wanted me to be, but I can do that, no problem at all. So the first waiver then, just to reiterate, was section one seventy seven fourteen E preliminary plan requirements. And I will note that in the in discussions with the township engineer, they they were in support of all of. Of these waivers that were requested.
And these waivers that you're gonna read off, is that from the Gilmore letter dated December tenth? Or the? Rituis letter dated November twentieth?
Actually, I had sent, I was requested to send a revised waiver letter dated yesterday, December fifteenth.
Yeah, there should have been December fifteenth one emailed out. From township.
All right, thanks.
Okay, no problem. A second waiver is section one seventy seven forty one F. Not less than fifteen feet of open spaces should be provided between the curb line. Of an uncovered parking area in the outside wall of the nearest building. So as you can see in this image, we have our parking within five feet of the building wall. Basically, just due to the the tight site constraints, they have a certain area, as you can see in this black. Oh, I'm tracing on my screen, but you probably can't see it, I'm sorry. The thick black line on that image is the unit boundary. So they're required to have. A majority of their improvements within that, specifically their building as well. So we are trying to just get the parking as tight up against the building. And for an industrial building, we don't see that as a as any type of an issue. Okay, next. Section one seventy seven forty one K with regard to internal parking lots, separator islands, islands to be confined with curbing. Our request is to not install curbing around the islands within the parking area and the aisleways. Kind of the the new theory and methodology of stormwater is to let it run off parking areas, get it in a BMP. Whether it's a grass line sway or a rain garden. Additionally, this site, we have some very flat elevations. So it'd be difficult to have curbing and inlets everywhere and try to convey the stormwater. We would be coming and asking for. A whole slew of waivers to conveyance calcs, just because the pipes would be so flat. Next, number four, one seventy seven forty two B. This is with regard to lighting in and around parking areas, should be a minimum of one foot candle. In discussion with the applicant, we're requesting that the lighting levels in a portion of the parking areas be reduced. That's that's actually the western parking area, the northern parking area, and then over on the east side where the truck court is. There's actually some existing wall packs that are mounted on the existing facility. And again, industrial site in nature, we're trying to not. You know, light this up like a convenience store. So we we think it fits in the nature of the development. Okay, next. Number five is one seventy seven forty three A. That sidewalk should be provided on one side of a budding streets, the boundary streets around the property. And both sides of any other street, except in the opinion of council. What with the advice of the township engineer and planning commission. If they're deemed that they're unnecessary for public safety and convenience. So we're requesting this waiver to not install sidewalks. Essentially, our frontage would be all of Veterans Highway and Route four thirteen. That would be out of our condo unit boundary area. But in the the true letter of property boundaries, that would be our frontage. So. There's no other sidewalks out there to connect to for pedestrian traffic. And this applicant is only responsible for sidewalks within their condo unit area or things within their. Within their property, or I'm sorry, the the unit, condo unit. Next, number six is one seventy seven forty three B. On lot sidewalks are required for convenience and access to all principal buildings. Designed for human occupancy from streets, driveways, parking areas or garages for convenient circulation and access to all. Project facilities. So our, again, this goes back to the last request, this would. You know, basically, the gist of this is we would have to install sidewalks along Veteran Highway. And and. The. Overall, you know, scheme of pedestrian traffic within the development, there's nowhere to connect them to. We do have sidewalks immediately around our building with the ADA ramps and everything else. So we we feel that the car parking areas are not huge seas of parking. So employees, you know, they're any traversing one one bay of of car parking to get into the building. Next, number seven is forty nine D. Nothing other than grass or ground cover shall be permitted. To be place planted and set within an area of an easement unless necessary for the purpose of the easement. So there's an easement that I have a snip here on the screen of. It is a bell telephone easement. Ten foot wide that has a fiber line in. And we do have some information from Dow on some specifics on that line. But in short, we are asking that we can install asphalt over that as well as the dumpster enclosure. And when I get some of that additional detail from Dow, we can provide that. To Kurt for for review that I don't believe we'll have any issues with installing a dumpster enclosure in that area. Number eight, section one seventy seven fifty five K two. Outdoor collection stations shall be located to avoid being offensive and shall be screened from view and landscaped. So our request for this is to not install landscaping around the dumpster enclosure, which is in the lower right corner. That black block, black box that you see on the screen. If we were to install landscaping, a small landscaping bed around this, the reality is that all those plants would die. Within probably several years and it would just be an ongoing maintenance nightmare. So the applicant couldn't can put, you know, slats in the fencing or there's that other fake vegetation that could be put if if the screening. If the commission would like a little bit of screening. Again, it's an industrial park. So there's, there's a lot. You know, I'll say less, less appeasing things to look at than a few dumpsters. Next. Number nine, one seventy seven sixty five. Concrete monuments and lot corners shall be set at all individual lot corners. Meeting the requirements of this section. So we would just ask to not install corners, concrete monuments. Around this lease area and specifically around the entire Dow project. It's the the overall property is very large and the condo unit could get shifted at any time with other development. So we would just, we're asking for a waiver of that. And number ten. This is two sections, so one seventy seven ninety one C three and one seventy seven ninety two C three. This is with regard to, okay, locations, names with the streets, location of railroads, sanitary sewers, storm drains. Et cetera, et cetera, that whole list of items there, but within two hundred feet of any part of the track being shown on the plans. So we do have a survey that is is fairly extensive on the project. But we are asking to just show specifically what is in the development area. As we found when we did some underground investigation work on utilities, like most industrial sites, there's stuff everywhere. So we could, we could literally spend months trying to track down other utilities and things on the site. Again, there's none of these items being offered for public dedication where there's an easement that would be of concern. So we think that's a reasonable waiver. Next. Again, kind of a twofold section, one seventy seven ninety one A and one seventy seven ninety two A. Where the final plan be drawn at a scale of one inch equals fifty feet or one inch equals hundred feet. Just from a plan presentation, this site fits nicely on a one inch equals thirty foot sheet. So we're just asking for a waiver of the scale of the plans. Next. So this is with, the next two items are with regard to the stormwater management ordinance. This is specific to the Bristol Township Delaware River South Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance. And specific one set, section one seventy three eleven A with regard to water quality. We are requesting, and this goes back to, if you look on the lower portion of that image. You see the big dark areas. That is the lagoon, as it's referred to as, where a lot of runoff, discharge, other things from the Dow property go to that. To go in and actually permit that with DEP to send additional stormwater is. It would just be a monumental feat. We would have to go out and pick up every little piece of of grass and asphalt on the entire property. So that's why it to to seek some relief, since we are doing our own stormwater management within our, near our site. That we would be allowed. That the water quality volume to the the two year delta be looked at from a straight pre post. And not a reduction from pre back to a lower year storm. For for the stormwater calculations. Did everyone follow me on that? That's a little.
That's okay. You could move on to the next one.
Okay. This one again is very similar, section one seventy three thirteen and one seventy three fourteen A in the same stormwater ordinance. Whereby, again, asking for straight comparison of the pre to post development rates, not having that reduction. So and actually, what we have supplied, as I mentioned, we got our NPDS permit. So everything that we had supplied to them, they were, they were satisfied with. And is my last slide. I hope I didn't move through them too fast for anyone. Be happy to discuss them in more detail if you would like.
Thank you so much for your presentation. So Tom or Kurt, do either one of you have any questions or comments concerning? So Tom or Kurt, do either one of you have any questions or comments concerning this?
I don't have any comments, Kathy. Thanks.
No comments, Kathy.
Got it.
I have nothing, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so planning commission, would we like to entertain a motion here?
I'll make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to council that 390 George Patterson Boulevard Associates LLC, One Tower Bridge, 100 Front Street, Suite 560, West Conshohocken, PA, be granted final land development approval in order to construct an industrial warehouse building on the property located at 390 Patterson Boulevard in Bristol, PA, tax parcel number 5-62-001-C11. And with regards to that motion that the Gilmore letter dated December 15, 2020, that all the waivers be requested, that our request be granted.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
So we have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, with that being said, thank you. It's been moved. So thank you so much for your proposal tonight and bearing with us and good luck with that.
Yeah, good luck, buddy.
Thank you. Everyone stay safe with the weather. Have a nice evening and a nice holiday.
Thanks.
Okay, next and final on our agenda tonight would be Bruce A. Goodman, 636 Old York Road, Jenkentown, PA, requesting preliminary and final land development approval for a proposed vehicle storage area on the property located at 6200 Bristol Pike, Levittown. Tax parcel number 5-73-118 and 5-73-118-01 in an M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone District of Bristol Township. Do we have anyone here tonight representing that?
Good evening, yes. This is Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Rubin, Mullen, Maxwell and Lupin. I'm here with Bruce Goodman, who's identifying as Judy Goodman tonight, apparently. And CJ Bach is our civil engineer from Bowler is on as well.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Did you have a presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We do have it on your screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, so the first, so this is 6200 Bristol Pike. The owner is in their 80s. It's been neglected and vacant for a very long time. We're excited to revitalize this property in conjunction with the Amazon that's going on next door. The first four slides, you could just tick through them. These are just street views from Google Earth to give you a flavor of what this looks like today. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's not a pretty site and we're excited to change that. The next two slides are aerials. They are showing really what's on this property. It's really compacted with a lot of stuff and not a lot of pervious cover. Mr. Goodman has been with Goodman Properties for 40 years developing land. And he's a landlord of about 700 commercial properties. So he's known for revitalizing property. He's known for taking pride in, in what he develops. And he can't wait to clean this up and be part of the, the Amazon revitalization on this part of Bristol Pike. The property is about 9.7 acres. It's comprised of two parcels. To the rear, as you can see in this, this aerial, that's where the connection is to Amazon is to the rear portion of the property. And that's where we're going to have, we plan on having a connection and a cross-access easement to allow all the parking to occur for the Amazon vehicles on this site servicing the building that's going to be or is under construction on 6300 Bristol Pike. The next slide shows just a different shot of that aerial. So that green area in the upper right, that's probably where the connection would line up with the adjacent construction for Amazon. So the proposal, next slide, please, is to, oh, this is the Amazon property. If you can see in the back where the parking is, there's a driveway connection there. That's where we would connect to the Amazon property at 6300. The next slide should be ours of our proposed parking area. We're proposing 574 plus or minus parking spaces to house those Amazon vans. The only structures proposed, if you can see in the dark brown towards the entrance off of Bristol, there's a guardhouse, a little guard shack that would be constructed for security purposes. And then there is a shelter for employees where they get transported over to this property to get into the vans. That little shelter would be provided for those, sort of like when you go to the airport and get the long distance parking, that sort of arrangement. So the improvements include it will be fenced in. There'll be a decorative fence along the front. You can see a lot of landscaping will be provided where there is literally very little grass on this property at all today, no trees. And, you know, we have the opportunities to support Amazon. So you have two parcels in the township that will thrive and increase your tax base. We do have the Gilmore review letter dated December 10, 2020. We can comply with all the comments in the Gilmore letter, but for our waivers. We did identify the waivers in our initial submission. Gilmore identifies them as well as one through six on its second page. We submitted today an updated waiver letter because we identified one additional waiver. I'm not sure we need it, but we've included it as a seventh waiver request. So with that, I can go through the waivers and we can move along, if that's okay?
Perfect, yes, the waivers.
This last slide is just showing how, because we have so many parking spaces on our property, ADA requirements dictate that we add additional handicap spaces. So they are going to be located by the door of the Amazon building where ADA spaces should be located. So we just wanted to show you how we can update the plan in this regard. If you'll go back to the previous slide, we can just sit on that one while I go through the waivers. So the first waiver is section 177-14E. And that is the waiver that this application be considered both preliminary and final at the same time, similar as the previous applicant. We think we can resolve all the preliminary and final requirements in one plan set and not have to bifurcate the process. 177 43A is a waiver from the requirement that sidewalks be installed along our frontage. As you know, there's no sidewalks on either side. And this isn't a place where we want to promote pedestrian activity. So we're requesting a sidewalk waiver. Item three has to do with two different sections, 177 43B and 177 51A 1A, relative to the requirement to provide street trees. And again, sidewalks appear in these sections. You can see the landscaping that we're able to provide along the frontage there. And we ask that a waiver be provided for the street tree technical requirement. Next, we have section 177 48D3. That is the requirement that grading cease five feet from the property line. That we're asking for a waiver so that we can grade up to zero feet along the property edges. Next is 177 55K 1 and 2. This is the one we've added. There's a requirement that outdoor collection stations be provided for garbage and trash removal or recyclable materials when indoor collection is not provided. So we have a guard shack. He'll have a trash can. So I think we comply with this section. But if the township feels otherwise, the Amazon building has its own refuse collection. Us being just a parking lot, really, we're asking for a waiver to not provide a dumpster or anything like that, as that wouldn't be necessary. Next, we have a waiver from section 177 91A 1 and 177 92A 1. And I'd like to point out that the waiver letter has a typo. They have L's in there where there should be ones. But that's relative to scale. We have asked that the scale be one inch to 50. No, we want to do one inch equals 40 instead of the required 50. And that's just for the ease of the engineers reviewing the plans. And lastly, a waiver from section 177 91C 3 and 177 92C 3. And like the previous applicant, that's the request to not provide man-made features within 200 feet. We are able to submit an aerial though in, in lieu of that. And we think that would suffice in this instance. So this is, that's it. It's pretty simple and straightforward. We have a lot of outside agency approvals that we have to tend, tend to. Of course, we will do all of that and work with your township engineer to revise the plans according to their letter.
Thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Tom or Kurt, do either one of you have a question? Or any comments?
I do not. This is Tom. Thank you.
I have no comments or questions either, either, thanks.
Commission, any comments, questions?
I have no question.
No questions.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'll make the motion that we recommend to council that we request preliminary and final development to Bruce A. Goodman, 636 Old York Road, Jenkentown, PA, for a proposed vehicle storage area on the property located at 6200 Bristol Pike, Levittown, tax parcels number 5-73-118 and number 5-73-118-001 in an M2 Heavy Manufacturing Zone District of Bristol Township, as well as all the waivers that are requested on, what I have is the Bowler letter dated December 16.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so hearing none, it's been motioned and seconded and approved. So thank you.
And I can't wait to see this project.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
We're very excited, we're very excited about it. So I'm glad to hear that you are too.
Oh, yes. Can't wait for this one.
Oh, good.
Revitalize that whole area right there. So thank you so much.
Yeah, our pleasure. Thank you for holding this meeting and everyone stay safe.
Do the same.
Thanks. Good night.
So with that being said, John has sent me a note and in his manner, as he always does, and he thinks about the viewing public and our community and everybody in the township to say, please, everyone, be safe, happy holidays, a happy and healthy and better 2021. We've all gone through a crazy 2020. So I, as you can see from the meeting tonight, there's some really wonderful things that are happening in Bristol Township. And 2021 looks to just be, you know, fantastic for the township. And we want to have it fantastic for all our residents too. So thank you all so much. So with that, I'm going to say, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, so it's been motioned, seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? And do we have anything, was that a wave or?
That was a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, all that good stuff. Miss you guys for real.
There's a microphone, so, you know.
Happy New Year.
Yes. Happy holidays, everybody.
Yep, so we're going to conclude the meeting at 8:03. And again, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and thank you all.
Kathy, great job.
Thank you for all you guys do.
Thanks a lot.
Great job.